If you would, we're gonna first have our invocation and our pledge to the flag. We have Pastor Bob Ferguson here with us tonight, and he's gonna give us our invocation. So if everyone would, please stand. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. If you would, please pray with me. Father, we thank you this evening for the day that you've given us. My prayer would be that every opportunity that you provided us, we would've taken full advantage of, Father, that we look around us and we see all the things that you would have us do, and too often, we wait for others to do what you called us to do. Help us tonight, as we gather here, as the city of Goldsboro, to be in prayer for the needs of the people that we have in our community. We know you love them and you care for them. I thank you for these that have gathered here in roles of leadership when many others have chosen not to. You bless each one of them. I thank you for the skills and talents that you've given them, and I pray, Father, that everything we do would be in unity and for a purpose, and that purpose and unity is that your name might be glorified and honored. We just thank you for the blessings you share. I thank you again for all the things you give, but right now, I thank you for the love that you've shared with us through Jesus Christ, for it's in his name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you.
Shouldn't you slip me up, brother?
We have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Haynes.
Here.
We're all here. We've got the approval of the minutes from the work session, regular meeting of June 5th, 2017, and a special meeting of June 6th, 2017, for adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same? Motion carries. Presentations will be of the Gold Star Award recipients, Human Resources.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Allen and Council.
Good evening.
The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contributions to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, cooperation, and quality of life. At this time, I would ask Chief Whaley if he would come forward to present the City of Goldsboro's August 2017 Star Award.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. During the Hurricane Matthews, there was an extreme amount of work done by our department in search and rescue and evacuations, and y'all have all heard about that and saw a lot of it yourself. During that time, we acquired a Zodiac boat and a Zodiac-type inflatable raft. Since then, the boat and the raft have been put together and have been tied in with a water rescue team that our department has put together. We have gone through some extensive water rescue training there in the past few months, and we have another class where some of our individuals are going up to the mountains to be certified, to be state-certified in water rescue. During that time, we acquired a trailer for about $300. Don't ask me how I done that, I just come across the trailer, put the boat on. And we needed to design a trailer that would hold the boat and the raft and be able for easy deployment, easy access to get a hold of it. To get a trailer to do that, and I wish I had some pictures of it, it's kind of basically a double decker, so if y'all come by the fire department and see it. The Zodiac sits on the bottom, the raft sits on the top. To get that, the trailer would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $14,000, the one that we had, were looking at getting. So one of my companies, Captain Baden Lee, and his three personnel decided that, Chief, we can do that a little bit on that. So they went and took the time on their own. Some of it was off-duty, some of it was on-duty. In the evenings, after their regular work was done, they worked on this, and they designed us one of the nicest trailers I have ever seen. It's completely, they rewelded it, fixed the braces, done all that work in the evenings, and put new boards on it, and the total cost, the total amount of money they spent doing this was $650. This took a lot of effort, a lot of time, carrying it even off-site to their houses to work on sometime and stuff like this. So at this time, I would like to present to you for the Star Award Captain Baden Lee, firefighter Mike Perkins, firefighter Zachary Brooks, and engineer Ray Wells.
First off, I did want to say one thing, Chief. This is not the first time you guys have been up here for doing innovative things on the chief. One thing we got about the fire department, they're all about getting a lot done and saving us money, and we always appreciate what y'all do. I know it's a long process for y'all, but we really, really do appreciate what you do for the citizens of Goldsboro. Who's this one?
Zachary.
All right, now look, you gotta smile. Jeff, where you at?
Isaac, hey, you might want this to, this is what you really want, brother.
You know, we got a group picture of them? Let's do that. Y'all come by the fire department, let's get a group picture with the chief. If y'all don't mind him being in it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, so next, we have the Peeps Borough Day proclamation. Is anybody here for that? I was hoping nobody would come, so I didn't have to read this thing. You just come on up, and I'm gonna read this real quick, and I still am having a hard time with this one, trying to get over the name of it, but...
That's fine.
It's all good. All right, "Whereas Peeps Borough Day will be held on September 9th, 2017, in conjunction with Peep Week 2017, Peeps Borough Day is a celebration of the creative collaboration between arts and businesses, people in the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the ACWC Peep Show is an outstanding exhibit of marshmallow masterpieces created by artists, nonprofit organizations, businesses, students, and families on display at the Arts Council of Wayne County, including a People's Choice Contest. Whereas Penelope Peep Official Spokes Peep for the Arts Council of Wayne County invited businesses to sponsor Peep Tastic Marshmallow Masterpiece created by local artists." These are like tongue-twisters, these are killing me.
They are.
"Whereas citizens of our fair city may enjoy a sweet cinematic experience featuring Peep motion films at the Paramount Theater, featuring Peep fantastic specials at local shops, hotels, restaurants, and interactive surveys and games celebrating the people who work diligently in our region's poultry industry. Therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, by virtue of the powers vested in this office, do hereby proclaim September 9th, 2017, as Peeps Borough Day, and the city of Goldsboro encourage all our citizens to participate in Peeps Borough Day in Peep Week 2017." Man. I've done a lot of proclamations, but I never done one for Peeps Borough.
Mr. Mayor, and this is Marco Peeplo. He travels better than Penelope.
I'm over. You want to say anything? Tell me what it is.
Yes, so...
Let everybody know.
Absolutely. Marco Peeplo is one of our spokes peeps, as is Penelope. You may have seen her at the library. She'll be moving back to the gallery on Friday. But we welcome all of you to come to the Peep Show at the Arts Council of Wayne County. All of the artwork is made from marshmallow peeps, and it is a fundraiser for nonprofit organizations throughout Goldsboro and Wayne County. So please join us. The peeps are arriving now, they'll be coming in through September 1st. You can come celebrate with us on first Friday, September 1st, all the way through September 17th, but absolutely during Peep Week and on Peep Week Festival Day, September 9th. Don't miss the Peep Show, and don't miss all the wonderful things happening in Goldsboro for Peep Week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Wendy, would you let the audience know who you are?
Yes, I'm Wendy Walker, Director of the Arts Council. Hi. Thank you, Councilman Hale.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your support of the arts in Wayne County.
Good luck. Hope you have a lot of peeps.
We do have a lot of peeps. I invite peeps here.
All right, next, this one is not as enjoyable to do, but we have a resolution for Pastor Bob Ferguson. He's retiring after many, many years, and I'm sure Chief West will have something to say probably, and I know Councilmember Acock is a member of that church. But I'm gonna read it real quick, and then we'll let anybody who wants to talk. "Resilience and appreciation to Dr. Robert Ferguson. Whereas Dr. Robert Bob Ferguson is a pastor of Madison Avenue Baptist Church and has served as a volunteer police chaplain with the Goldsboro Fire Department from July 29th, 2008 until his retirement on July, I mean, on August 31st, 2017. Whereas Pastor Bob, as we call him, has been a hands-on pastor who watches over, works closely with, and makes himself available at all times for police, employees, and citizens, supporting them and helping them cope with life-changing events. Whereas Pastor Bob has participated in ride-alongs, road shotgun with officers, attended council meetings, opened and closed police functions with prayer, and opened the fellowship hall at Madison Avenue Baptist Church for police events. Pastor Bob also serves on the Police Violent Crime Task Force, Goldsboro Partnerships Against Crime PAC, the G-PAC, and focuses on giving repeat violent offenders a second chance. Whereas he has awarded the Chief's Award in October 2012, awarded for outstanding services in the police department, and received the Community Affairs Individual Human Relations Award in 2014. Pastor Bob put together a resource committee and worked on a referral list with all the resources available through area churches. Pastor Bob is a member of the International Conference of Police Chaplains and earned his master training level certificate in July 2013, which is granted when a chaplain has completed 350 hours of professional studies and 10 years of service. Whereas during his tenure with the police department, he has distinguished himself as a dedicated professional who always gives 100% of himself to his congregation, his community, and the officers and the staff of the Goldsboro Police Department. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express our appreciation to Pastor Bob for his service to the Goldsboro Police Department and the city of Goldsboro." So I offer this as a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? You want to make any comments before we let Pastor Bob come up?
I've known Pastor Bob for the whole time he's been in Goldsboro, and while I see him on most Sunday mornings, I'm not a member of the church. But I have been a member of the church, and if Pastor Bob had been there when I sort of changed churches, but I didn't change Sunday schools, I would still be there. I know all the parishioners that's here tonight, I've known all those for 30-plus years, so I hate to see him go.
Chief West, you got any sweet comments to make about Pastor Bob?
You know, I know Pastor Bob, he opened up not only himself and his church, took it apart, twice. You know, we'd go by there, they'd feed us, they would do a lot of things for us, send us, you know, give us some trinkets, and so not only did he open himself best to the department, but also the church as well. I know he helped me through some difficult times in my family, when some of our, we lost, we, but he's just always there for us. It came to me when I was major operations, I wanted to attend this kind of training, and that was kind of unheard of for me to have a pastor come do this, and wanted to get trained, wanted to do better at this, and so he's just been a wonderful last-stand to us, will never be replaced, and I appreciate everything that you've done for me and my family, and also my family police department. I do appreciate it.
Pastor Bob, come up, and let's get a picture with the chief.
My job is to make him smile. I'm in the middle, he's in the middle. Put him in the middle.
You're in the middle, preaching.
You want to say anything?
Thank you.
That's it?
Well, there are a few other things, I've got nine points. Let me tell you what, this is real quick, this has been a privilege, and I cannot begin to thank God enough for the opportunity to be with a man in the Goldsboro Police Department, and not find a group of people that I've ever met. And I just deeply appreciate the ability to serve with them and be a part of the city. Mayor, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, so now we're gonna move on to public hearings, and our first public hearing is CU 1317, Eli West. And if any of y'all want to leave and not hear the rest, you're good.
Yeah, the way we're going to let him figure out.
Item E is CU 1317, Eli West. The property is located on the west side of North John Street between East Ash Street and East Mulberry Street. It's highlighted on the map on the screen. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with ABC permits. This would be a wine bar and restaurant. There's an existing two-story building on the site which is to be renovated for the proposed business. The hours of operation would be 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, Monday through Thursday; 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Friday and Saturday; and 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sundays. The actual hours may change slightly depending upon the business, but should not exceed those that I just mentioned. The applicant intends to provide food for most of the time, the wine bars open, and plans to have lunch available. Depending upon demand, the kitchen may close at 10:00 p.m. some evenings. This is the property in question. The submitted floor plan indicates that both floors of the building are to be used. The downstairs will have tables, restrooms, kitchen, mechanical room, a bar, and wine cellars. The upstairs will have a restroom, tables, bar, and raised stage for occasional small-scale musical acts, up to two times per week. The proposed exterior improvements to the building have already been approved by the Historic District Commission. At this time, there is no action necessary. The Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on September the 5th.
Any questions, Jennifer? All right, if not, this is a public hearing, requesting a conditional use to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with ABC permits. Would anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. If you, you're gonna have to get sworn in, so when you come up here, the clerk will tell you what you need to do.
Hello. All right, so I just wanted to say a few things about this establishment and kind of how I got here. I'm a recent transplant from San Francisco, California. Moved here in May. My cousin, who has been here a few years, is in the Air Force, and he has started Blue Yonder Properties, a real estate company. Right now, he's recently developed the properties that Brew Works is in, and I currently live on top of there as well, and has done pretty well. He had me come around Thanksgiving time and check the place out after they had recently opened on there, and he's really wanted to root in the community, or set his roots in the community. So I looked at it, obviously coming from California, it's like, it's a pretty big transition right there, but pretty close with him, and he truly believes in it, and he asked me if I would be interested in this, as I was in the wine industry, in the restaurant industry in San Francisco right now as well. And I figured it'd be nice to be around some family and kind of develop something on my own as the, it's a little bit more affordable than it is in California right now as well, to say the least. So anyways, came here, gonna do a wine bar and a restaurant, and kind of a place for community and entertainment, and when I say community, I really mean that. I see a lot of people, one thing when I came here, I saw a lot of people going, they'd go all the way up to Raleigh for things that they could probably keep in-house here, basically, you know, as well. So I want to really provide that as well, whether it be a little bit of entertainment, basically a place to come celebrate life, you know? And I feel, not that there aren't some places like that, but I feel like I can raise the bar a little bit. I'm right next to downtown Goldsboro Development Center as well, and I really want to set the bar high for this, because I do believe in what's happening in downtown Goldsboro. I was sent, you know, I'm very aware of some of the accolades that it's gotten, as of recently, some of the national rankings and all of that, and I believe it's a good time to come here and invest in this. And so anyways, I have chefs coming from Miami to help me out with all of this. It'll be a great place for lunch, great place for dinner, be a great date night, like I said, a place to really celebrate life on there as well. And we'll have a little wine retail as well, so instead of people having to go all the way to Raleigh to get some of this stuff, they can do it right in their backyard. And like I said, so far, so good. It's a great place, great community. I plan on sourcing from all local people as well, Cheshire Farms, all, like I said, all local dairy farmers, port farmers, everything, keeping it all within the community, kind of like the farm-to-table type atmosphere as well. Like I said, a median range, probably 30 to 65 years old, 70 years old on there, so it's a place for everyone, not just a place for young people. It's not just like the bar, we'll have wine flights, and it'll be very based on education as well. So we'll do educational classes, a place for private parties and all of that as well. So really looking forward to all of that, investing in Bobby, Simon Lee parking lot away from everyone here, so I hope to see you there.
Congratulations. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? All right, if not, we're gonna close this public hearing, and Jennifer, before we move on, I need to do one thing. Young man with your scout uniform over there, have you been here the whole time? Please, please accept my apology. You must've been sitting low, because I missed you when we did the Pledge of Allegiance, or I would've asked you to come up and help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, but I would love for you to come up and tell us your name and what troop you're in, if you're willing to do that. And forgive me. Usually, one of the councilmembers does a better job of telling me things.
I didn't see him either.
I didn't see him, I apologize.
How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Tell us your name and a little bit, anything you want to tell us, you tell us.
Okay. My name's Nathan Sutton, and I'm from Troop 14.
Okay, so they were here not too long ago, right? They have, some of your other troop members were here, I think?
Yeah, they were, because that was my old, back in prehistoric times, I was in Troop 14. And you're really squared away, too, and that, I like to see that.
All right, well, thank you for coming, and I apologize.
Being the next scoutmaster, remember, the eagle's a pet, not a race.
But you can come, if you want to come back anytime and help us with the pledge, you feel free to do that, okay? All right, partner.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. All right, so now we got item F, CU 1417, Salem Leasing Corp.
Item F is CU 1417, Salem Leasing Corporation. The property is located on the southwest corner of US Highway 117 South and Van Street. The property is indicated on the map in the red boundary line. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the outdoor storage of vehicles in conjunction with an adjacent business operation. The city council previously approved conditional use permits for this location in order to allow a used car lot, a weekend flea market, and the sale of storage buildings. A small building which was on the property has been demolished, and the site is now vacant. The property was recently purchased by the applicant who wishes to use the site for storage of vehicles associated with the business located to the west of the subject property. The applicant's proposing to enclose the entire lot with a chain-link fence with slats for screening. Staff has been working with the applicant to set the fence further back from 117 and install plant material to improve the appearance. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on September the 5th.
Are there any questions, Jennifer? Does this have to come up for site plan approval?
No, it's just storing of, as long as they screen it properly, they will be, it's permitted by, with the condition use permit of outdoor storage.
The business to the west, what do they do?
Do you mind that fall to the screen?
That's them, that's the trucking company.
That's the trucking company.
Yeah, that's them.
This is, I believe, the king plumbing business, and then this is actually the Salem Leasing Corporation, and they are working with the adjacent property, wanted to have access to that parcel.
With the doormen's, well, is that doormen's?
From their existing business, but they will be storing 18, about 18-wheelers, trailers, and they're in the business of servicing them. If they've taken a load out, drop it off, but it'd be a way, a place for them to have more parking and storage of those vehicles until they go back out on the road.
Mayor, an ask to the site plan question. Typically, on sites that are already existent, typically not do a site plan, we typically use an area photograph for a site plan. If you, if you need one, we can get one.
Any more questions, Jennifer? Thanks, Jennifer. This is a public hearing for conditional use permit to allow outdoor storage of vehicles in conjunction with an adjacent business operation. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing, and we're gonna move on to item CU 1716, Ismael Quondell.
Item G is CU 1716, Ismael Quondell. The property is located on the northwest corner of South Slocum Street and Harold Street, as indicated on the map. The applicant's requesting an amendment of a previously issued conditional use permit to allow the operation of a convenience store within the neighborhood business zoning district by increasing the hours of operation. The property was formerly operated as Bob's Supermarket. On January 17th of 2017, council approved a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a convenience store within the neighborhood business district. The adopted order specified a number of stipulations which were included as the conditions for approval. Of those stipulations, the hours of operations for the convenience store was limited to 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The applicant contends that he has been operating the convenience store for more than six months while meeting all of the stipulations. He is now requesting that the hours of operations for the site be extended to 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council on their September 5th meeting.
Any questions, Jennifer?
Yeah, Chief West, have you, what's been going on in that location there, sir?
I'm not aware of any calls for service there. I mean, if you have down Brookside, I think we had a discussion the other day about it, but it's a bit...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing to amend a previously issued conditional use permit to change the hours of operation. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak?
Good evening, Council. We are very familiar as a council and the community at large regarding Mr. Sam, as we call him, in the old Bob's Supermarket, and I don't need to avail you all of the history of the old building that he has, but I want to tell you that there's been a group of us... but I want to tell you that there's been a group of us that have worked very closely with him, and he has done an exemplary job in that community. The place is clean, the place is well-stocked, and he has carried it out, as the chief said, with no problems. We've got other establishments on that same road that I may not even call the name of that stays open to midnight, the shooting and everything going on, and he has not done that. I'm down there every week looking at it, and I've brought community leaders in to look at it, and I think this man has proven himself. And we are about the business, as we said to the other person, about community businesses and neighborhood businesses. And the people down there are just as happy as they can be with what he's doing. And I am here to say to all of you that I, as a group, and the citizens on Stadium Drive, Weaver Drive, Harris Street, all of them want him to be able to be open to a reasonable hour so that they can do things. And just like other citizens, they play the lottery down there like some of these other y'all do, some of y'all do, I don't do, because I don't know how, but, and they can't get their results and little wins to the next morning, because at nine o'clock is when it's done. And just being realistic, y'all, let's give him the opportunity to do what any other business is doing. And if I find something different, I'll reprimand him.
Chief, don't even have to go down there, because I'm down there more than the chief's police officer.
And I am strongly saying, let's give him the opportunity to be open longer.
Thank you, Ms. Short.
Thank you, Ms. Short.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I don't know if this is the sound for me to speak, but I also, that's the district I represent, and I've heard something opposite of the citizens down there on those same streets that don't agree with the business needing any extended hours. I'm also in agreement with them. I think nine o'clock is fine, I think we have enough problems as it is. Up and down Slocum Street, even some of the stores on Slocum Street, I've recently talked with the city manager about, and hopefully something will be done about those. I think nine o'clock is good hours, I mean, even food line closes at ten. So, I mean, if you can't get your lottery winners to the next day, I mean, what are you spending them on at ten o'clock at night, anyway? So, hopefully, I would like for the hours to stay exactly the same as they are.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else like to speak? If not, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move on to item H, deletion of the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Lady of City Council, item H, deletion of the extraterritorial jurisdiction, property access from Bryan Boulevard. The subject property is located west of US 117 South and includes a total of seventy-eight lots containing eight-hundred-and-forty-five-four-eight-one acres. Decisions extraterritorial jurisdiction, arcs around the area, and includes lots utilized for Busco Beach, a four-unit recreational camping area, a private cemetery, small corner portions of three privately-owned residential lots, as well as vacant or wooded land. More than half of the vacants or wooded land are owned by the city of Goldsboro or County of Wayne. Exclusion of the subject lots will result in the city's ETJ following the eastern bank of the Neuse River. In accordance with general statutes, properties within the extraterritorial jurisdiction are subject to city zoning, subdivision, and building code regulations. The city is unable to enforce this ordinance relative to nuisance within this extraterritorial jurisdiction. A notice of public hearing was prepared and advertised in newspapers for two weeks. All owners and adjacent owners were notified of the hearing by mail, and the property was posted indicating that a public hearing was to be held. The recommendation would be no action necessary. Planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on September 5th, 2017.
Any questions for Mr. West? Or you're not, you finished?
Well, I was just gonna say that that map indicates in the red, the area that we're taking out and the boundary would go back to the river.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Jim. This is a public hearing for the deletion of the ETJ for this property on the map across from Bryan Boulevard. Would anybody like to speak? Why did I know that? Good evening, Ms. Stanley.
Hi, Ms. Stanley, how are you?
I asked you way back when y'all took this property in not to take it in. Busco Beach is nothing but a pure nuisance, and that's what y'all are doing, is giving them free rein to take and run twenty-four-seven. Right here's a letter to Mr. Rowe, and they want it so that they don't have to follow the rules and regulations. At the present time, they are not following the rules and regulations of closing down those ATVs at eleven o'clock. You know, just recently, the man was killed down there, and it was after eleven o'clock. If you do this, are y'all gonna give us any protection out there against them riding those four-wheelers all night long? Basically, that's what it's for.
The only thing I can tell you, Ms. Stanley, is the county has an noise ordinance. And now, if we don't have this, the sheriff...
I'm aware of the county.
The sheriff has the authority to enforce the noise ordinance. So, whether they're gonna do it or not, I'm not here to say.
Okay, are y'all aware, on the property that y'all own, there, the city, there's restrictions?
We have heard you tell us that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, here is the map, and this was a subdivision. The county says there's no zone in that. This land is zone for residential. Y'all own it.
I can't speak to that, Ms. Stanley.
Before you do anything, you need to do some checking. Busco Beach ought to be able to come in compliance. Everything else out there is going on, and y'all know what's going on. You give them wide open to do what they want to, and you know what's going on out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Every one of you knows that it's a nuisance in the community. The rescue squad goes out there day and night, and it's costing the county and the city money. So if you take it, take the ETJ back, you're gonna open it up for wide open. Let them do what they want to. I'm asking you, at least, don't take the ETJ away until you can get that place straightened out.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you can do what you want to. How many people have got to die down there before y'all do something? Do I have to give you names, dates, and times?
No, ma'am.
Okay, because I'd be glad to.
Ms. Stanley, Ms. Stanley, don't leave yet.
Sure.
I'm sorry you're going through this, you know, you're at the age where you should be living out your golden years with no headaches, no noise at certain hours. I'm so sorry you're going through that. I've been to the commissioners' meeting, and, you know, I understand your plight. You're saying that if we give back the ETJ with no rules, or at least no conversation in place with the commissioners, that they're going to just continue doing what they're doing. I've heard about the deaths recently, I've heard about a drug overdose in that area recently.
Right.
So there is some problems going on there. So, Mr. May, I don't know if we can try to set up an appointment with the commissioners, the county commissioners, and at least see if we do give this ETJ up, that they have some rules in place that's gonna help Ms. Stanley and other people that live in that area. I mean, we have to think, you know, she could be our mom and can't get any rest.
Well, what I'm saying is this, you need to look at what's going on, and you need to take a look at what is going on down there at Busco Beach. We know before, they did not follow the rules, they haven't taken the fence down, and that's against the federal government, and that's on y'all's property. I mean, if you read this right here, and Mr. Barfield, which is their attorney, said that they didn't know that there was a restriction permitting operation from 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Now, you own the business, right? Don't you inform your employees what they supposed to do?
I usually inform them.
Okay, then this thing was in 2017, Mr. Barfield wrote that. I believe in some of the notes I've got where you and this council, not all of you, what you did was you said from 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM, I got your name on the record.
That's right.
So, they haven't followed those. Now, you're gonna give them a open, just go out there and do what you want to. I know I've been a pain in the neck for you, but I'm gonna tell you what. A lot of things are going on down there that y'all aren't aware of.
Well, I do, I want to follow what Councilman Williams is, you pull on our heart, we all are for you.
Well, I don't care.
But we can't go out there and enforce the law out there, Ms. Stanley, and you know that, we've had this conversation. The sheriff is the only person that can enforce the law.
Well, he ain't gonna do it.
Well, I, that's, I can't, I can't make the sheriff do anything any more than you can, or whoever, but all I'm telling you is, when we give up the ETJ, if we give up the ETJ, then this county has a noise ordinance, whether they follow it or not, they have one, just like we have the eleven o'clock to eight o'clock that we did that they're not following, that we can't enforce. The county has a noise ordinance, and the sheriff can enforce the noise ordinance. Now, but it's gonna be you arguing with the county. At least you only have one place to argue at, I guess.
I don't mind, I got plenty of time.
I mean, we, I think you're, we all feel for you, I mean, we do.
I'm tired of you feeling for me, let's get something done.
Well, we're trying to help you.
Y'all are violating the law. The fence, I told you, you could cure your problem with this place because of the fact it's illegal. The fence is on your property, Mr. Womack has told them, and they've done nothing about it. Now, do you want me to pay somebody to go down there and take the fence up? I'll be more than happy.
If the fence is there illegally and we've asked them to take it up, then I'm sure we can enforce getting it built up. I don't know. But we will dig into that, too, Ms. Stanley.
He had given him a word saying it was illegal. This ordinance from the county ain't worth paper written on it, because if your, if your people are working, which the deputy sheriffs are working down there, they're not gonna enforce the law. I saw them the other night down there at midnight, and they were there, and I can call the names of the deputy sheriffs, and they weren't enforcing it, they knew what the rules were. And they won't out in the bushes like they've been telling people, they're hiding out there, they got so much territory. If you've got six hundred and some acres, you don't need to be on the female land that the taxpayers' money has bought.
I will tell you that we have had conversations with the county that if we do this, will they protect that land?
Can you get the county to promise us out there that they're gonna enforce this thing and the law? They're talking about changing it.
We can certainly have conversations, Ms. Stanley.
Well, before y'all make some decision, give us something out there, because we got some folks out there that don't know what's going on.
Okay, we will work on it.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until...
You need to table, you don't need to...
Well, this is just a public hearing.
I'm just asking, it's not going away.
I didn't think you were. Thank you, Ms. Stanley. Would anybody else like to speak to this matter? Anybody else? If not, we're gonna close the public hearing for this and move to item I, which is another ETJ deletion.
This is the Pate property and the Mills property. Of the overall fourteen acres, parts is owned by Morrison and Charlene Pate. Five-point-eight-five acres are located within the city's ETJ. Eight-point-one-five is within the county. Of the Mills property, forty-four-point-seven-six acres is located within the city, and twenty-seven-point-eight-eight is located within the county. The owners of both properties have been approached to develop the property for a solar farm by some developers. As a result, the current owners have requested that the city relinquish the jurisdiction. A notice of public hearing was prepared and advertised in newspapers for two weeks. All adjacent property owners were notified of the hearing by mail, and the property was posted indicating that a public hearing was to be held. On August 14, 2017, a representative for the applicant submitted a written request to continue the public hearing on this matter to October 16, 2017, due to unforeseen conflicts. The recommendation would be, after the public hearing, by motion, continue the hearing on this matter to October 16, 2017.
Any questions?
I see where the property is, but I'm not quite understanding exactly where it is. What are those roads that are near there? Let me go to...
Need glasses?
That's, that's...
This is, I think, Cottonwood Drive is located here.
Jack, yes, area.
I think, Jack, that's property.
That's further down, further across the street.
That's across the state town road.
And this is the property I've been there proposing to delete from the ETJ.
So that's Cottonwood?
Yeah.
Cottonwood.
All right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It would back up to Cottonwood.
Yeah, yes, sir. Any more questions, Mr. West? Thank you. All right, if not, we will open this public hearing for the deletion of the ETJ of the Pate property and Mills property. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like, yes, sir? Good evening, sir.
I'm Bernard Williams, my property, which is part of Whisperwood subdivision, backs up to that property. My concern is, if it's taken out of the city jurisdiction, what will it be used for? Of course, you may or may not know that, but as long as it's in the city jurisdiction, I know I'm more protected than I would be if it was county.
Okay, so are you saying that, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, are you saying you're opposed to us taking it up?
Yes, sir, definitely.
All right. Any questions? Anything else, sir?
No, sir, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Herman Crumpler, I own some of the land around the Pate Mills, and I'm definitely opposed to it, it would just stagnate two neighborhoods.
Okay, you're saying you want to leave it in the ETJ, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing, and we'll move to item J.
Item J, it's street closings, it's Holly Street.
Oh, sorry, Jim, we need to postpone that to October 16, forgive me. Because we need a motion to postpone that to, wasn't that October 16?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion that we postponed it to October 16.
Actually, let me rephrase that, we need to continue it to October 16, let me get my stuff right.
We need to, I make a motion that we continue this in October 16.
All right. All right, raise your right hand. Post saying, motion carries, okay, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, the street closes, it's Holly Street from Clayborne Street to its terminals, Beet Street from Clayborne Street to its terminals, and Palm Street from Clayborne Street to its terminals. Each street section has been identified on the attached map indicating the length and right-of-way width of each. The petition street closures have been forwarded to the fire, police, engineering, and portal works departments for their review. If the street is closed, ownership of each right-of-way would be split equally between the adjoining property owners. The attached resolution will schedule public hearings on these street clothes for August 21st, 2017. The resolution will be advertised in newspapers for four consecutive weeks. Each street section will be posted, and all adjacent property owners will be notified of the public hearing by certified mail. The recommendation would be, by motion, adopt the attached resolutions, resolution scheduling public hearings on the closing of the above referenced street section for August 21st, 2017.
Any questions? All right, this is a public hearing for the street closing of Holly Street, Beet Street, Palm Street, from Clayborne to the terminals. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. You're not coming by yourself? Good evenings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My wife owns the property there at Beet Street.
Okay.
On one side of the terminus, and we were just concerned about taxes as far as if we took that land or whatever that you're offering, would it be any tax increase or anything like that?
I'll let the town manager answer that question a little bit.
You know, I don't know that I have a definitive answer. If it increases the property value, then it would increase taxes, but an increase of the street closing, you would capture that right-of-way, half of it, and so if there is a tax increase, it would be minimal, in my opinion. And so, if there is a tax increase, it would be minimal, in my opinion, but I don't know that we'd have any information that would verify how much. If it, if it raises the value of your property, then ultimately it could increase taxes, but I think it would be a very, very small increase, if any.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I own property on 504A and 50B, North Clayborne Street, and I'm, basically, the closing of that street is the only easement I have into my apartment B by there, and, uh, so I'm asking, I'm opposing the closing of that road.
Are you sure?
Yeah, 504A and B, North Clayborne Street.
There was a gentleman that came here earlier, um, to the meeting next door, that had a letter indicating that he opposed that, and I think he has some apartment.
Yeah, there's, there's one beside it, too.
After I explained to him that he would have 25 feet of that property, um, he withdrew his, um, request to deny.
Well, 'cause you understand you get half of the property.
Oh, 'cause I get half, okay, okay.
He had 25.
Okay, okay.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. If you, if you get back and change your mind, just let us know, okay? All right, anybody else wanna speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing, and we'll move to the next. Which is, we're gonna excuse the planning commission, but I think they already left anyway. I think they, I think they just sort of blew us off tonight. All right. I see one of them. Anyway, okay. All right, so now we're gonna move to public comment period time, and so we're gonna, if anybody in the audience would like to speak for up to three minutes, you're welcome to come speak. Yes, ma'am.
I just turned my camera to the floor, isn't it?
That's okay.
I got a lot of... I've been in New York for nine years, I've got to handle this.
How are you tonight?
A little bit activated.
Uh-oh.
Well, y'all ain't seen the best of me yet. You see what my shirt says?
I can't, it's...
It says, "It's a driver thing, you wouldn't understand."
Okay. All right.
Now, I got something to say about the parking downtown.
All right.
I don't know whose cockeyed idea it was to put half of the street with parallel parking and the other half with diagonal parking, but somewhere along the line, one of you people have got to understand that when you took away, or whenever you put that parallel parking in there, you took away two parking spaces.
Correct.
For one. Why did you do that? You don't have an answer?
That's just what we did, ma'am. At the time, that was the design we came up with.
And another thing, since you're talking about designs, that sculpture down at the end of Center Street, by the Paramount Theater, that is the ugliest thing I have ever seen. It looks like an upright penis peeing all over the place.
That's pretty graphic description.
Oh, I could get more graphic.
Okay.
Believe me, I could. But that thing needs to come down, and it needs to come down soon.
You'll be glad to know we're fixing to take it down. I just hope you like what we put back. Yeah.
As long as it ain't nothing that looks like that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll try to pay closer attention to that.
Please, I could give you a design that looked better than that.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Is that it?
No.
Okay. What else we got?
I called your office and asked for a meeting with you because of some things that were going on at my building that were not taken care of by the people that were supposed to take care of them.
Okay.
Now, we have a sheriff's deputy in the building at night.
Okay.
Because we feel safer there. And you wouldn't talk to me about it.
Ma'am, I have no clue that you ever called me.
Well, you need to talk to your secretary then, and if she can't help you, then you need to hire another one. And I'm for hiring for a dollar an hour. But I'm gonna tell you something, y'all better be earning your money, that little raise you gave yourself. 'Cause so far, I ain't seen no indication that you've been doing.
Okay. You have a great night.
I will, but I will be back.
Okay, anytime.
You can count on that.
Have a good night. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm trying to push your phone.
Take your time. You're good.
I do take my time.
You take your time.
I'm a redneck, what do you wanna do?
I'm sorry.
Who's laughing, please?
I laughed, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You better save me some of that ice cream when I'm young.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna borrow some and let you take a tour.
That's right.
Oh.
I'm not done yet.
Go ahead.
Councilman, good evening. Uh, my name's Austin Pike, president of Downtown Merchants Association. Uh, about a month ago, we sent you a letter requesting implementation of two-hour parking on Center Street. I know at the last work session, there was a couple of concerns raised. A lot of it was around Paramount. Uh, I did do some research today, uh, talked with Stephanie at the Paramount as well. Uh, a majority of their schedule for their events do happen after 5:00 PM on Friday or early on the weekend, where we're not requesting the two-hour parking to be enforced. Um, they do have a few field trips that happen during the day. Uh, most of the students are bused over, so parking wouldn't be an issue there. They usually park the buses off Center Street anyway, over there on Chestnut, near me. Um, and so, like I said, you know, the main concern is that we've got residents that are parking on Center Street, or mostly employees parking on Center Street that are taking up parking spots that our customers couldn't use. Um, studies have shown that a parking spot in front of a business can be worth up to $30,000 a year in sales. Uh, where customers, if they come up and don't find a parking spot, they'll leave instead of coming in and shopping. Um, so that's a big hit to some of our businesses downtown. Um, again, two-hour parking from Ash to Chestnut, so that still leaves the Chestnut to Spruce Block open up, um, which a lot of the Paramount performers use, so they would be outside of that as well, so it wouldn't be inconveniencing any of them. That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, just wanted to say some things, um, concerning, number one, um, your, your approval of minutes for work session on June the 5th as it relates to housing. And what you have here is a little, uh, is a part of a 99-page document that talks about the, uh, CBD BGR grant from, uh, that's approved by HUD, and it talks about certain things in this 99-page document that can be approved, should be approved, and how much money it involves. And I'd just like to advise and suggest to City Council, we keep our target. The other thing I want to do is publicly volunteer that as far as the grant for housing that we have, several people in a new committee called DRUM that we formed, we have quite a few churches that has volunteered to help participate in making sure people who need assistance that has been damaged by the flood are able to fill out a, uh, application in a very timely manner. There's some of our larger churches that is willing to host up to 100 to 200 people to apply for this grant at one session during an evening, and we are ready to assist whatever department that we require extra manpower to, uh, assimilate that. And I just want...
Let me understand you, first off, what was the name of the group?
Okay, the name of our group is DRUM.
Spell it.
D-R-U-M.
Oh, I thought you were saying drunk.
DRUM.
Drunk.
It's for breakfast, a fellowship, and information for pastors. And what we do is have a breakfast each morning, we tell them about all the different news that's going on in the county, and they were very interested when we talked about, uh, the grant for HUD.
And then, so now tell me, one more time, what it is you're offering to do, to, what assistance are you offering?
Well, what we offering is, once, once the city publish how this particular grant's gonna work, the CBGR, because it's a very large portion of that money is meant for helping people with unmet needs. And it's a lot of people out there, even though we haven't, I hear them talking about gyms in the City Council, I hear them talking about generators over the County Commissioner, but a large, huge portion of money's coming into Goldsboro in Wayne County to help people who's had house damage, who has flood, the most significant part in its income. But what we willing to do, because when you get too much money, rather than have a slow process where people just drip down to City Hall two or three every week, I mean, we'd be 150 years trying to use all that money. So what we are saying is, we are willing to help have a church or churches and one or two nights, plus, put out what the requirements is, and have everyone report to a particular church, have the staff who's in charge of the grants come out, and we process 175, 100, 150 as many as we possibly can. And that way, it would jumpstart the need for that money. That money won't just be sitting around. At least we would have them into the system. Now, granted, it may take a longer time to process them to get around, but at least the city will have, say, hey, we got X amount of people that's into the system, that's got a seat at the table. So that's what we asking of. We helping to get people to sit at the table. It's up to the city and the process of the grant when they get fed, but we just wanna make sure we get as many people sitting at the table and having, uh, obligation, uh, you know, uh...
Well, let's take your offer and absorb it, okay? Because it might be where we can work together and we can do that, and I don't know enough about the logistics. But, but what I don't want anybody to think is, as bad as it, I hate to say this, this is very, very governmental, this process, and it's very, very slow. I mean, I'm seeing a year before we, I think we're even gonna get any money, I believe, but, but, you know, up to three years is what we're hearing on a lot of this, and some money will flow in between, but for people that have been displaced, people who aren't in their homes, they can't get in their homes, that's a long, long time. And I don't know that we at the city, you or anybody else, can make the process, from what I heard tonight, and then trying to educate ourselves, much faster because of people releasing the money and the way we release money. But I think your idea is good, that if we can keep people informed, keep them ahead of the curve, that as money's released, then, then we're already there. So, so I like the idea, and I think we need, we can talk further about it.
I'm just, I want to point out that, reading the documents, it looks, appears as though the county's gonna get 24.8 million with another possible three to six in the pipeline for Wayne County. Half of that will come to the city. So we talking about roughly 12 million, 12.1 million, and that's coming to the city.
Right.
All I'm saying is, let's, uh, 80% of that portion's for housing needs, a large portion of that is for housing needs, rental people, people on houses, a lot of different things. Let's try to get as many people applied for that, and let's worry about when the actual, when they actually get, uh, serviced, or when the actual person, but at least have people, and we know, hey, we got 150 people waiting on this grant, or 100 people waiting on this grant, and Goldsboro, we the fastest city out of all the four counties that's giving this money. Goldsboro is responding the fastest, 'cause we putting the most people in to be recipients of this money. So that, that's the point I want to say, you know, we don't have any control, but what we do have control over how many people we can get into the system, how many Goldsboro, uh, people in the county can do what they wanna do, but as far as the Goldsboro, the people living in Goldsboro, I think we offering to be able to help.
Mr. Wright, I have a quick question for you before you leave, 'cause I know you've been here for a little while, but, um, pertaining to the 80%, does that money go to mechanical things as well, as far as generators, or?
No. It's, uh, and probably, uh, it's specific things that can go by, but most of it has to, 80% of it has to do with housing, rental housing, homeowners' housing, and, and, and a lot is already outlined, I'm hoping, you know, it's, but it is seven programs, seven or eight programs.
It is very complicated, and we, we hear your offer, we appreciate your offer, and we'll come back to you. And I do want to be on the record, as you noting that we let you stay longer than three minutes.
Well, you had questions, and I need, and I didn't want...
I know you don't blame it on me.
Well, I only spoke less than three minutes.
Just sit down, Mr. Wright.
I had enough.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Mayor, um, I wanted to respond to Mr. Pike. We had citizens that live downtown. Can I pass it to you?
Hold on one minute. Let's get to Mr. Wright, and then you can...
I thought you was, I thought you was, uh...
Well, I'm trying to get him to sit down, but he's still standing.
Well, you asked questions, and you...
We don't have any more questions.
I had one more other subject I want to bring up about Kalia.
Oh, my goodness.
It's just 30 seconds. Now, just want, I just want to thank the City Council for finally hiring a Kalia person. I will say, the highest, uh, the salary we offered represents the highest-paid Kalia certification manager in the state of North Carolina. So, we, we are getting someone that's gonna be very well compensated as compared to the rest of the state that has some of the, some of the cities that have some of the largest police departments. Also want to mention, too, that under Kalia, that one we sign up for, we only have 189 standards that we sign up. That's tier one. Tier two is 484. And while that's important, if, if we start talking about special operations and SWAT or Kalia manager training, that's not a part of that 184 standard. So we gotta make sure as we move forward as a city, if we talk about cameras or SWAT teams or anything like that, the first question should be, is it a part of our standards of the 189 standards that we paying for? If not, we gotta bring in those standards extra. Now, I just want to make that point clear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night. We'll work on that, too.
Thank you.
Would anybody else from the audience like to speak? Ms. Stanley. Now, you've already spoken once.
Yeah, it was about a different subject.
Are you gonna change subjects on me?
Posh.
Okay.
Look, now, the, uh, Bosco Beaches, attorney...
No, I'm talking to Melissa. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to disrespect you. Excuse me, darling. Okay. Uh, Mr. Barfield said he would try to, they ought to enforce the rules down there. Did y'all table this thing in the ETJ?
It, it doesn't come up for, um, two more weeks, Ms. Stanley.
Okay. Well, meanwhile, could somebody be so kind as to ask Mr. Barfield to inform them about the regulations and the ordinance and, because I'd like to get a little rest.
They know, they know that. I, I know they know about the...
But he said he's gonna do something right here.
Mr. Womble's gonna check on the fence for us in the next two weeks, then we can talk about it.
Okay.
And we're gonna try to check, get with the county and meet with the county to see what we can work out with them to give you whatever assurances they will let you give us. They will let us give you.
Meanwhile, could you take and get Mr. Barfield to hold him to those hours down there?
They, they, they know the hours. They absolutely do the hours. There's no doubt in my mind.
Just give them a little reminder.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Wright, will you give them a reminder, please?
He ain't gonna enforce it. He did before. It's a waste of his paper.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? 'Cause I might fix to close this public hearing pretty quick. Would anybody else like to speak? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and we're gonna move on to, or the public comment, I'm sorry. We're gonna move on to consent agenda.
Forgot about me, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Williams, go ahead.
I was saying that pertaining to the two hour parking, there were some citizens that actually put together their own petition and they were opposed to it. And most of the citizens actually live in the Waynesboro house and a lot of them are seniors. Some of them drive, some of them don't. Some of them have access to the rear parking, but that's also public parking. A lot of their biggest concerns are they have nurses that come in, they have people to come in and bathe them, take care of their medication, clean their house. And those individuals will have to park outside. And a lot of times it takes several hours to clean someone, to clean their house, to, to cook for them. So those, we, we cannot forget about the seniors that live downtown and, and the residents that live downtown. I think that downtown, honestly, it's not ready for two hour parking. We don't want to chase people away from downtown. I mean, I think we've put too much money in here and if someone comes out and they have to park their vehicle and they come out and it's a ticket, they're gonna, they're gonna go to Berkeley Boulevard. They're not gonna want to come downtown. So I think that we really need to take that into consideration. The seniors that live there, they have 85 apartments, you know? Some of them have a husband and wife that live in those units. So we really have to take that into consideration. I think maybe a year from now, we can bring it back and, and see if there's more businesses downtown. Right now, we don't even have all the businesses that are in place right now.
One thing, can somebody find out, either Jimmy or Julie, I had always heard that the Waynesboro house, that they had reserved parking behind.
They have parking, but Mr. Will allowed it to be public parking because of the issues. And also remember, we had Ms. Metz do a study. We did the study and it said we had adequate parking downtown. So at, at this point, I just feel like we don't need to spend, we don't need to take and, and put this pressure on these seniors down here.
All right. You good?
I'm good, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right, so now we're gonna move to consent agenda. Item K.
Item K, item K is a street closing in Hummer Place. The street petition for closing runs from the western right of Hummer Street in a gnarly direction to its terminus at the railroad for just as possible 300 feet. The road has a right of width of 50 feet. The petitioner is the city of Goldsboro. The attached resolution will schedule a public hearing on this street closing for September 18, 2017. This resolution will be advertised in the newspaper for four consecutive weeks. The street will be posted on both ends and all adjacent property owners will be notified of the public hearing by certified mail. The recommendation will be by motion, adopt the attached resolution scheduling a public hearing on the closing of the petition street for September 18, 2017.
Any questions to Mr. Wright? All right. Item L, who's doing that K?
Item M is to sell a real property at North Oak Forest Road. On July 14th, the Southern District of the United Holy Church of America offered to pay the city of Goldsboro a sum of 67,500 for the property at North Oak Forest Road and made the bid deposit of 5%, which is 3,375. The city and the county acquired this property in May of 2017. The county commissioners at their August 15th meeting agreed to convey the share of the property to the city. The tax value for both properties, the property is 135,000. An advertisement appeared in the news August on July 25th with the 10-day upset period expiring August the 7th with no counteroffers. The buyer will pay the attorney fees associated with transferring the deed. The city and the county will share the portion of the property of 33,750 minus any expenses. By motion, I'm asking council to accept the offer in the amount of 67,500 and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the deed on behalf of the city and the county.
I personally would like to make a recommendation that we don't sell this property for this amount of money. I believe it's a good piece of property that will have more value later on, especially as this area develops. And to me, we would be selling it too cheap, but that's just.
I agree.
I agree. Plus that forest goes, that forest is gonna go through there.
Oh man. So, but we had the property up for sale, correct?
Yeah, but we don't have to sell it for after sale.
True we don't, but I mean, how long has it been up for sale?
We've had it since May.
It only had a few, three months.
Yeah, why would you want to sell something below market value if you don't have to?
But a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. So my thing is, I mean, you know, it's just, it doesn't even matter to me. I'm just tired of the mess, man. I'm, I'm just tired. Tired.
Do we need, then I'll take consent agenda?
Right.
Take a motion and we move it off the consent agenda to unrequiring individual action.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. So item L's gonna be moved off to item for individual action. Item M?
Item M is a budget amendment for the Warren Parks Program. At the August 7th meeting, council meeting, the Goldsboro YMCA spoke with the city council about collaborating to hire a full-time mentoring coordinator. This coordinator would work with the rising ninth graders at Goldsboro High School. The city's partners would, has been identified as the Goldsboro Housing Authority, community serving schools, Wayne County Public Schools and various local churches. The YMCA has requested 35,000 from the city to assist with this program. Funding was not appropriated in the current fiscal year 17, 18 budget, so it would be necessary to adopt a budget amendment. It's recommended that council adopt the attached budget ordinance decreasing the unassigned fund balance of the city, general fund of the city's general fund in the amount of 35,000 to fund the Warren Parks Program.
Any questions? Thank you. Item N?
Mayor, city council. Item N, condemnation of dilapidated dwellings. Inspection department had performed, was performed on 18 substructures that do not comply with minimum housing standards. Therefore, precision was initiated to bring these structures to code compliant. The location of these structures and the condemnation sequence are listed below. You should have it in your file. Notification was sent from the inspection department to the owners given ample opportunity to renovate these properties. All steps and procedures required by the ordinance have been taken, including the last opportunity to repair the structures for notification, notification of upcoming council meeting for the purpose of requesting condemnation. Legal notice by advertising entered in the local newspaper on two occasion related to each of these structures. Here's a screen to show you. Here's a, here's a list of those, of those properties, all 18 properties. And we got some pictures showing, showing each property. 403 Bill, 407 Bill and 409 Bill are properties that I think Councilman Foster had had some complaints on in the past. 1505 North Berkeley Boulevard. This particular property, the whole back end of the property has been caved in. I think this property, we were trying to look for them during the, during the time they had the riding the road, they could never find the owner. So of course we couldn't ever find them either. So that's another property. 403 North Kelowna Street, I think Councilman Williams had some major concerns about this area. We actually end up, had to end up taking precautions to close it, close all those houses and board them up. There's several properties, 405, 407.
That's a whole neighborhood.
And 409, and it is raw sewage. We had a real bad raw sewage issue over there as well. 411. 413 Kelowna Street. Also, we have 400 East Chestnut Street. It's probably been written up for a long time. Couldn't get, couldn't get good pictures of it. Floors and stuff were pretty bad in there, so we took pictures what we could. 605 East Chestnut Street, of course this property burned. 614 Crawford Street, I think this is in one of our areas where we're trying to clean it up. 412 East Walnut Street, of course we had a lot of complaints on this property. It is, it's not in historic district, but it's a, it's a two-story, you know, house and people just vandalize it and it's in bad shape. And this particular property, 801 Park Avenue, I will tell the council, this is in historic district. So if it's in historic district, we'll have to go to the historic district and ask the council for CFA to condemn, to tear this down. And pretty much they're gonna give them six months extension. And I did get a letter from PNC that the owner has entered into an option to sell through PNC, so.
Where is this one at?
Park Avenue.
801 Park Avenue.
They will fix what they got.
1013 North Johns Street. 508 Edgerton. And the last, 607 West Mulberry Street. And this is the map showing each of the properties.
Anybody have any questions, Brown? Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I think that's gonna make a big difference over there.
Thank you. You just be working on your next list. Item? Item O is Beet Week.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Item O is in reference to Beet Week Festival street closing. The fourth annual Beet Week Festival is designed to celebrate Wayne County's poultry industry. It includes kids rides, vendor booth, food, live music on two stages and a public education unit and a Kansas City BBQ Society cookoff to be held Saturday, September 9th. Since January, Goldsboro Parking Recreation, DGDC, Arts in Wayne, Boys and Girls Clubs of Wayne County, Downtown Merch Association and Wayne County Travel and Tourism has been planning to make this year's festival the best one yet. The festival will offer an array of activities for all ages to enjoy. The event takes place on the 100 and 200 blocks of South Center Street. Each year's attendance has increased and we expect this year to be no different. Due to logistics of the festival and to keep attendees safe, Goldsboro Parking Recreation is requesting that the 100 and 200 block of South Center Street be closed from Friday, September 8th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then on Saturday, September 9th, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Center Street at the intersections of Walnut, Chestnut and Spruce. All vendor booths, entertainment attractions and displays will be arranged to secure proper access to all fire hydrants, alleyways and driveways. As with all downtown events, affected city departments will be contacted and the following concerns are to be addressed. All intersections remain open for police department traffic control. A 14-foot fire lane is to be maintained in the center of the street to provide access for fire and emergency vehicles. All activities, change in plans, et cetera, will be coordinated with the police department. And the police and fire department and public works are to be involved in logistical aspects of the event. My recommendation, or my recommendation by motion, grant the request a temporary closing of the 200 block of South Center Street, Spruce and South Center and Chestnut on Friday, September 8th, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM to be used for activities associated with Beet Week, subject to the above conditions. And also Center Street from Ash to Spruce Street and the intersections of Center and Mulberry and Center, Walnut and Center and Chestnut on Saturday, September 9th, 2017, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM to be used for activities associated with Beet Week, subject to the above conditions.
Any questions? Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
Item P?
Mayor, city council. Item P on the consent agenda is an item regarding the installation of a fence at Union Station in conjunction with our city NC DOT Federal Highway Administration Enhancement Grant. Upon further review, a recommendation is not to award the single bid received, but instead to reject it to allow us to rebid it in October and specify a six-foot high fence. So recommendation is by motion to authorize the mayor to reject the Eastern Earthscape and Construction's bid at $62,000.
Any questions?
Mayor and council, we would need a motion to change the recommendation to reject the bid.
Certainly.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Q?
Item Q is a recreation advisory commission appointment. On January 5th, 2015, Mr. Jason Pate was appointed to serve on the Recreation Advisory Commission to his second term with his term expiring on December 31st, 2017. Mr. Pate has resigned effective April 27th, 2017. On January 5th, 2015, Mr. Mike Pate was appointed to serve on the Recreation Advisory Commission to his second term with his term expiring again on December 31st, 2017. And Mr. Mike Pate has resigned effective June 12th, 2017. Members of the Recreation Advisory Commission staff would recommend Floyd Wingfield and Deanna Taylor to serve on the Recreation Advisory Commission to fill the unexpired terms left by Mr. Jason Pate and Mr. Mike Pate. And the recommendation is by motion for the council to adopt the resolutions appointing Floyd Wingfield and Deanna Taylor to the Recreation Advisory Commission and then commending Mr. Jason Pate and Mr. Mike Pate that have served on the Recreation Advisory Commission. Any questions?
Yes, sir. I thought, because we were going over the boards, we were gonna hold off on pretty much any new appointments. I think that, you know, if, if possible, we can get a chance to view these potential board members, you know, and just see if they fit into that new criteria that we're trying to, to have.
And I never saw their applications. Maybe I'm.
Saw one.
This mama state.
It says one in the packet, Ms. Taylor. She's, she fits the criteria. I don't know about.
But I think we still, we still should wait until we complete everything. We have 30 days to go over the boards.
I agree.
And then why don't we get to, why don't we establish that first? Let's do the process first.
Yeah.
And then we can appoint people.
Yes, thank you, sir.
I agree with that.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
You're saying remove.
So we're gonna, why don't we take this out off the consent agenda? We need a motion to take this off the consent. Make a motion to take this off.
Remove it.
You made it, who said? I made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, item R, is that a reappointment?
It's a reappointment to the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority Board. On July 6th, Mr. Bob Waller was appointed to serve as first home of the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority Board. Mr. Waller was, was reappointed on July 21st, 2016. Those appointments are for a year and that expired July 21st, 2017. It's recommended Mr. Waller be reappointed to a third term expiring on July 21st, 2018. Again, we'd recommend council adopt the attached resolution, reappointing Mr. Bob Waller to the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority Board.
I say.
Well, this is a case where he, he will stay on until he is relieved of his duties or whatever.
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, that's in the bylaws of the gateway.
Yeah. I just think that, you know, we, we definitely need to, you know, overlook the criteria and, you know, and the rules of process so everyone knows who is on these boards. If they are reappointed, we all know initially.
Oh yeah. And, you know, what I'm saying is, not necessarily reappoint him, but he continues to stay on until we read the reappoint him or appoint somebody else.
Let's just do the same, let's just take this one off the consent agenda as well.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, so item R is removed. Item S?
Item S, adoption of supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Goldsboro, North Carolina. The 1990 agreement was reached between the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the city of Goldsboro to engage American Legal Publishing Company to revise the Code of Ordinances of Goldsboro. The revised code was published in 1995. The agreement stated that American Legal Publishing Company would prepare supplements for incorporation of new ordinances to the city Code of Ordinances on a recurring basis. In compliance with this agreement, the city has received the S-40 supplement. The supplement contains all the ordinance of a general nature enacted since S-39 Code of Ordinance dated December 5th, 2016. By motion, the recommendation is to by motion adopt the attached ordinance enacting and adopting the 2017 S-40 supplement of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Goldsboro.
I make a motion to remove that for now. We just got this ordinance, these ordinances on Friday and I haven't had time to read through them properly.
I second that motion. Any discussion?
Aren't there any motions?
Didn't we do this two weeks ago?
We did this two weeks.
We did this two weeks ago, but we didn't get the information until Friday and that wasn't enough time between.
Is this passed Friday?
Yes. So to get it on Friday and try to vote on it today and it's 27 pages, plus we still have to look at correspondence with the O, doesn't make sense.
Okay, so we got a motion and second. All in favor, motion, raise your right hand. Oppose? Motion carries. So we're gonna remove item S. Item T is departmental monthly reports?
Yes, sir. If any question on departmental reports, we would try to address those.
All right, no questions. So we have the consent agenda for approval minus items, Melissa?
Items L?
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda. Items K, M, O and T.
And N?
No, no, no. Let me, to clarify, you had item L moved to action. You have item QRS that you've removed. The others you've amended midstream, so they've changed. So when you adopt the consent agenda, they'll be what you've adopted there.
Okay.
All right, is that, is that your motion, Mr. Wright? All right. Is there, all right, that's a roll call vote. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, Allen. Councilmember Foster.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.[1719.65]
Councilmember Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Consent agenda is passed as amended. Items requiring individual action, Center Street parking downtown?
Center Street serves as main thoroughfare into downtown by function and design. Since its redesign, the corridors of traction has grown, and there has been an increase in commercial businesses and consumers. Beginning in 2015, the city hired VHB, a parking and traffic consulting firm, to examine current downtown parking conditions and provide recommendations to address current and forecasted parking issues. This plan, the Goldsboro Parking and Traffic Analysis, was adopted on August fifteenth, 2016, by the Goldsboro City Council after numerous public input opportunities, including stakeholder meetings and public surveys and meetings. At the time of the study, the Center Street was noted to have current supply challenges and meeting demands at peak times. During meetings between the consultants and the study steering committee, it was noted that this problem could be resolved, at least in part, by managing the supply with time-restricted parking to eliminate issues where persons park their vehicles within this corridor for lengthy periods. On July twenty-seventh, 2017, the Downtown Merch Association, a group of downtown business owners submitted a letter to the mayor requesting action to mitigate Center Street's parking issues, specifically requesting time-limited parking on Center Street from Ash Street to Chestnut Street, Monday to Friday, from eight a.m. to five p.m. The traffic and parking analysis recommended strategies to address parking issues within four categories: educational, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluations. A time-limited free parking strategy would be consistent with the recommendations of the study, addressing educational encouragement and enforcement strategies. Given the desire to create a strong downtown economic climate and support our growing downtown business environment, the city's downtown development staff is in support of the Downtown Merch Association request. By motion, adopt the attached ordinance, amending Chapter seventy-five Parking Schedules of the Code of Ordinances that rescinds all past parking policies and regulations pertaining to Center Street, and also adopts time-limited parking strategy for Center Street from Ash Street to Chestnut Street, Monday through Friday, from eight a.m. to five p.m.
You have a recommendation?
I'm moved that we adopt the recommended parking policy.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. You know, we're all getting up there in age, and I don't see how we could sit here when we have all those seniors that live downtown and not think about them. That's why we're on this board, so we can think about people. You know, you're thinking about a few shop owners that don't even have businesses on Center Street. I have a business on Center Street. I want my business to succeed. However, those people, they have nurses aides that come in there. They have family members that come near. When you get eighty years old, you're not moving very quick. It takes time for everything. So how can we just vote so openly? You know, you better think about yourselves because you may be in that position. You may be in that position. And then, let me get back to the Paramount. The Paramount has a lot of entertainers, a lot of dance companies that come near. Before they perform, they come there and they need parking. Their parents bring them there. So it's not just at five o'clock that shows start. They have to make preparation. So they go there and they take up all the blocks. So you're gonna tell me a parent is gonna have to drive around the block to find a parking space because they're gonna get tickets? And you're gonna run these people away that do wanna shop downtown? Right now is not the right time to enforce two-hour parking. And where are the police gonna, how are we gonna enforce this two-hour policy? We need police in those areas where crime is at. We don't need them down here chasing customers away. And that's what that's gonna do.
We also have two barber shops downtown, and I don't know what you know about a barber shop, but to get a haircut in within two hours is almost impossible nowadays. So how are you gonna go, I mean, you're gonna run those guys away, and they've been in business for a long time. Mr. Royal's been in business since I can't remember. Then you also have Premier Cuts that's been in business and has been doing well. They also bring a lot of customers downtown that might shop other places while they're down here. So I just think, right now, we don't need it. I don't see where it's gonna make a big difference. I understand what the gentleman said, as far as a parking right up front will bring thirty thousand dollars a year. I mean, it might, but depends on what city that is, that's in. So I'm pretty sure here in Goldsboro, that might not be that number. And I think it's adequate enough right now that, you know, with the seniors and everything, how can you, if you're a senior, it might take you two hours to get upstairs with your stuff and back down. You get up there, you wanna rest for a minute, and then come back down, and it's just, it's just, right now is not the time, you know? And I think we should be trying to figure out ways to combat this situation other than ticket people forward.
More of those people, you address with more?
You know what? Please don't address me like that with that, because I'll open up my shirt and show you all, both of you young men, what the hell I've been through. I've been slit open nine times in one year. I've had feeding tubes put through me four or five times in one year. I've been through more hell than any one of you both have been through in your whole entire lives, and you're both, one of you's almost in your fifties, the other one's in your forties.
I stand for the city, for real.
Please stop. Please stop.
Sir.
Please stop.
Sir.
Y'all can stop me from talking, but he can talk like that, he represent...
Yeah, I can stop you from talking, and if you don't quit talking, I'm gonna ask you to leave, okay?
Please stop. I'm speaking, and like, I'm gonna speak truth. I've been through more hell than anybody in this room. I still go through hell. I will believe that with them, no, it is not the right time for the parking adjustments. I don't believe it is. But I will say this, if it has to pass, that we pass it and give them extended amount of time, instead of being two hours and putting somebody on a massive restraint, because that is a strong restraint to have two hours. If it has to pass, give them at least three hours and go from there, because you're putting a massive restraint on somebody. And if it has to be a time restraint, please do it within some kind of, like, consideration of people. Because I'm telling you, I've been, I can open my shirt and show each and every one of you, especially in the city and the county, because I know people from the city and the county watch this meeting. I've been through it. I've had staples, not stitches, staples, put in my body from my groin to my sternum. And my point is, is that I understand what Councilman Williams is saying in regards to you being older and worried about that, and yes, I do know about the people who live in the Waynesboro House. I go and visit them on a regular.
Let me ask a question, council member Akon. You made the motion, right? On my hand, you made the motion, you second it. Would y'all consider withdrawing your motion unless based upon this for another couple of weeks? Because, number one, I would like to know about the parking behind the hotel.
Can I speak of that before?
Yeah.
I've spoken to Mr. Will, and he has encouraged his residents to use that parking. He can't make them use the parking, but he has encouraged them to use the parking to keep the cars off the street.
Well, I just wanna be sure.
Did he open that parking up to public parking, parking as well?
I just wanna be sure there's available parking there. I don't know the answer to that.
And I'm saying, if he opened it up to public parking, then that's still an issue.
Somebody sometime had told me they had assigned spaces. I wanna verify that.
No, they don't. It's public parking, but however, when you live in that building, and when you have, when it's not adequate parking in the rear, when you have nurses come in, when you have people, they're gonna be, they're gonna park out front, and they're gonna come out, and they're gonna take it.
I got all that. Can we wait two weeks? Would everybody live without? If you'll change your motion, Mr. Ham, and if you don't want to, we can just vote. And I'm fine with just voting.
I'll withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw, I second.
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion that we delay this to our next meeting?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All of you raise your right hand? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, you just said?
Nah, I just...
Can we just vote?
Yeah.
All right.
Item L.
Now we got item L, which is the real property.
Yes, sir.
And we don't really need to go back through it again.
Only if you'd like for us.
No, we would not. I think the motion we need there is to entertain not selling the property at this time and holding on to it.
So move.
We need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor, raise your right hand? Oppose? Motion carries. So we're gonna hold off on selling the property right now. With that, we got city manager's report?
Mayor and council, I don't have a report this evening. I would ask if you have time for Economic Development Close Session.
All right. City attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor and councilor's report, start with Mr. Williams.
You know, the recent events with all of the things that occurred in Charlottesville, we had a visual here, and I just wanna thank the ladies that actually put it together, Ms. Clarkson and Ms. Owens. I wanna thank all the citizens that came out as well. It was beautiful. It was, it showed us that there are some people here in the city that, you know, they understand the issues, they were multicultural, and they're willing to help to combat bigotry, hate. And I just appreciate them coming, and, you know, I push this out to any and everyone in here, that, you know, we have to stand strong, you know, with racism and division. We have to really fight that. It exists here, it exists all over this country. So we have to work on that. And also wanna thank Mr. Wright. Mr. Wright has actually been very informative. He's, you know, helped us. Sometimes people don't appreciate that, but that's a lot of work that he puts in doing research. You know, sometimes people don't like to hear the truth, but he always brings the truth, and I respect that. I respect that. And I wanna thank also the clergy that came out to the visual that we had. It was a lot of clergy that came out. And I wanna thank Mr. Sharif too, that took his time for Twenty-four Hours of Peace. I felt it was something that's needed here. I think we've tried a lot of different things. I wish that my fellow council members would've got on board with Twenty-four Hours of Peace. It wasn't a concert, you know, it's been a lot of rumors out there. It was something that would educate our young people here, would instill a lot of great things, dealing with conflict resolution. Sometimes you gotta try things that are different, you know? You keep trying the same old thing, you're getting to get the same results. So, you know, I just wanna thank Mr. Sharif again, because he didn't have to take his time to come down here. You know, we pay people to come down here and present, and we didn't pay him, but he came with his own resources. Thank you, Mr. Sharif.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Roll. No comment.
More?
I like to thank the writers that have, that are, I forgot their name, but they're Goldsboro writers, they had their book drive and bookbag drive for all the students going back to school this past weekend. Ms. Latoya Brown and Mr. Bryan and all of them, for the writers out there at the Goldsboro Club. Wanted to thank them for their great support for their students and going back to school who are all in Wayne County. Wanted to thank Ms. Catherine Rollins and their whole group at Brew Works to try to help a fellow business owner who's been in business since when I was five years old. So I wanted to thank them. And just finally, I just wanna speak on something because it doesn't seem to be very apparent when I speak a lot of times, because I wanna speak for the city, and you go, whatever. You know what? I speak for the city because I do the right things, and sometimes being a leader doesn't always mean you get the glory and pat on the back because you're doing the right thing and you're doing this. Sometimes you have to make decisions and consequences for people that you just know won't always be the best, but in the long run will be ultimately a great outcome. Myself, I have incurred racism. I've incurred pains. I've incurred surgeries, have gone through it, and I'm only thirty-seven years old. I've gone through things that you think that you won't go, you won't be getting into your later years, and you've had to go through, and I've done it all in three decades and seven years. One thing I will say is that I don't let that stop me, and I try to prevail and move forward regardless of what goes on. If it costs money to make something happen, and the city won't give it to me, or the county won't give it to me, or just fellow people in this neighborhood or this community that's got more money than I do won't give it to me, then I find ways of making it happen. And you just have to do these things. You, as a human being, whether you're black, white, Hispanic, Asian, you have to fully move forward and find a way to do things, because you got, if one door closes, God didn't close one door without opening a window. So you just gotta move and find that to happen. And if you really feel that way, I'm sorry that you feel that way, my brother. But if you're gonna make these things happen, you want things to happen, hey, guess what? Make 'em happen, because guess what? I'm making myself broke, trying to bring jobs, trying to bring other things that will help the city, help the county, and it doesn't matter what goes on. So that's how I feel about that. But have a wonderful evening.
I apologize for just laughing. It was a comment said up here, and it was funny to me. Not gonna repeat the comment, but it was funny. So I apologize for everybody for laughing. But other than that, I don't have any comment. Mr. Ham?
No comment.
Mr. Akon?
Again, I'd like to thank Pastor Bob for his eight years helping with the Police